Services sit in individual funds for the county courts and the district courts, correct? We make contributions into those funds on an annual basis. And so those, similar to individual defense, those bills will continue to get paid even as that account goes to zero. And there have been occasions where we've gone and had to make supplemental appropriations into them. In terms of like the formal language access program and the, and the office and the kind of the more holistic approach to it, you know, we're waiting court's approval for the plan. And then, you know, but we'll again have to identify offsets for it in the coming years. But um, once, once the plan is approved, we'll move forward with the funding.
That makes sense. Thank you for that clarity. I think those are all of my questions. So thank you again very much for being here.
Thank you, County Judges' Office. And now District Courts, you will have two minutes for closing remarks.
Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you all for working with us, uh, the District Courts, uh, on all of our initiatives, whether it's handling backlog or um, uh, trying to get um, access to services, uh, to individuals that appear in the courts. I thank you. Uh, your offices have all been wonderful to work with and um, I appreciate you all allowing the time. The, the highlights, uh, one thing I think we weren't able to get to, at least in our opening, that we also wanted to make sure, was that our request last week um, is um, we still have a request to adjust the associate judges for civil and family. As it stands with the most recent uh, budget approvals from uh, the court, these judges, these thirteen associate judges that serve district court judges, are the only judges that aren't going to receive a pay adjustment in this county. I think that is um, not the result that I think anybody wants in this county with regard to pay adjustments. And so I advocate that also, you know, as a part of the um, our request, that we make that adjustment. Uh, the other thing is language access Senate Bill nine, but also the operations of the civil and family courts. Um, we highlighted the operations manager, but I also wanted to highlight uh, a tax master request that we have made for the last three years. Tax masters operate and work eight thousand cases without a coordinator. And that makes it very difficult for the, for the civil courts to issue excess proceeds, excess funds, judgments, because we just don't have the administrative staff and support for it. So that would be another position I think would benefit not only the judiciary, but the county as a whole. So I thank you again. What we've learned from the, from the pandemic was that judicial um, services in courts are essential. And I think they should be funded as such. Thank you.
Thank you, District Courts. And that will conclude their presentation for the day. Next up, we will hear from juvenile probation. Welcome, Juvenile Probation Department. You will have three minutes for your presentation, followed by five minutes from each court office for questions, uh, and then two minutes for concluding remarks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Henry Gonzalez, Executive Director of the Harris County Juvenile Probation Department, serving in this role since two thousand eighteen. We're one of the largest departments in the county with just under twelve hundred employees, and annual expenditures exceeding one hundred million dollars. The core mission of our department is twofold, to ensure public safety and to rehabilitate youth. We do this through supervision, intervention, and comprehensive support services that aim to prevent delinquent behavior. At our department, we've been intentional about transforming our system from one that historically relied on punitive methods to one rooted in positive youth justice. This means equipping system-involved youth with the resources, opportunities, and support they need to thrive, not just to avoid reoffending. Beyond our traditional probation services, we also operate a two hundred and ten-bed juvenile detention center and two post-adjudicated residential facilities. What sets us apart is our focus on education. We're one of only two jurisdictions in Texas that operates a charter school within our facilities, ensuring continuity for education for youth in our care. Additionally, we run a community-based campus known as the Opportunity Center, which offers GED instruction, vocational training, job placement, and wraparound support services. This campus is actually located in what used to be a third residential facility, symbolizing our shift away from confinement and toward community-based solutions. We've significantly reduced the youth involvement deeper system levels. Partnering with the District Attorney's Office, fewer than half of our referrals result in court petitions. For example, in two thousand twenty-four, out of fifty-one hundred and nineteen referrals, only fifteen hundred and twenty-seven petitions were filed, down from eight thousand six hundred and twenty-nine petitions on eleven thousand fifty-six referrals in two thousand seventeen. This sustained reduction in referrals demonstrates that diversion works. It does not lead to more delinquency. In fact, it helps prevent it. Detention admissions dropped from forty-four hundred and sixty-three in seven, in two thousand seventeen to just two thousand forty-eight in two thousand twenty-four, with average daily population cut by half. Youth placed in residential facilities declined from eleven hundred and sixty-four to two hundred and eighty-eight. Commitments to the Texas Juvenile Justice Department decreased from two hundred and ten to fifty-six. Overall, youth under supervision each month are at least one thousand fewer than seven years ago. These numbers are more than statistics. They represent lives redirected and futures reclaimed. Our ongoing mission is to continue building a system that prioritizes youth development, family engagement, and long-term community safety. Long-term, I'm sorry, community safety.
Thank you, Director. Now we will go to court offices for questions, beginning with Precinct Two. You've got five minutes.
Thank you both for coming in today. Really appreciate it. What role does your budget play in your ability to engage with community-based organizations that support youth in the probation system?
Plays a big role in that. Uh, on our non-labor side, we, we invest a good amount of money in our uh, community partners that provide services such as education advocacy for our young people, counseling, drug treatment, uh, community-based sex offender treatment. We provide alternatives to detention with that funding through electronic monitoring. And uh, with youth advocates, they provide a tracker program to where they help provide supervision and support services for our young people pending court as opposed to being in detention, waiting to go to court. So it, it plays a significant role in that.
And following up on those alternatives to detention, how does your budget reflect the need to divert youth from further engagement with their criminal justice system?
That, that's vital in what we do. Like I mentioned earlier, our, our numbers show that diversion works. It, it's not just a slap in the hand. We don't just use a, uh, what's known as a bank caseload where we put files away for those lower-level offenders. And if something happens, you pull it out. And if nothing happens, you don't pull it out. All of our kids, even those that are diverted out, get an assessment. We partner with Resources for Children and Adults, and, and they help do those assessments and determine what services and needs that youth and family has. And they make sure that those get provided for them. When, when we divert a kid out of not just our system, but detention, we want to make sure that the diversion is not diversion services offered by our department, but it's a true diversion away from uh, the juvenile justice system. I, I talked about Resources for Children and Adults. The Harris Center operates a youth diversion center for those youth who make it into detention, but we feel don't belong there. There's either those lower-level offenses or these are situations in which the offense is really an example of family issues. And by diverting them to the youth diversion center, then those families are connected to mental health services that they've never been able to access before or have had a hard time accessing. And, and again, it's, it's connecting them to a system that's providing what's really needed. And ju, uh, involvement in the juvenile system is not what they really need.
Absolutely. Um, and could you share any success stories, maybe from last year or the year before, where your budget allocation decisions led to improved outcomes for your department?
Sure. I, I think um, our, our biggest project that, that I'm really proud of is our Opportunity Center. Our Opportunity Center is, it was a youth correctional facility, one of our residential facilities. And we were able to shut that facility down because of our decrease of numbers in our system, our overall footprint, really. And we repurposed that to turn it into a community-based program. That is, what, what we in essence did was take a building that was built to lock kids up and turned it into a building that now provides services that keeps kids from getting locked up. So now we're able to provide all of those services that our judges traditionally would send a kid to a residential facility for, because they knew that that's where they could get those intense level of services. Education, vocational training, wraparound services, mental health services. What we wanted to show is that we can take the funding that was traditionally used to run a correctional facility and use that to provide those services in the community. And again, as an alternative to incarceration. So with that, we have graduated close to a hundred young people from the GED program, provided them with vocational training and job placement, and been able to uh, provide their, their support services needed, not just to them, but to their family. And again, we were able to do that in the community and not having to incarcerate these young people. Uh, and I think that really shows a good investment.
Thank you. And real quick, um, in the past, we've talked about collaborating with the Harris County Animal Shelter to bring some dogs over to the youth village. Um, has that come to fruition yet?
It, it has. We have four rescue dogs there in a very nice doghouse that's air-conditioned. Uh, in addition to that, we still have our two rescue horses that, uh, that came from the Humane Society.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Thank you. Uh, Director Gonzalez, I had a question. It's um, one of the things that we were provided, so filled vacant positions, and the total for that is eight hundred and sixty-seven. And you said you had twelve hundred.
I'm sorry, you had number for, of how many?
Eight hundred and sixty-seven. It says the total of positions.
The delta is the state funding.
Oh, I'm sorry. Those are, we have a combination of county and state-funded positions.
Okay.
Uh, and with state, there are um, there's two separate pots there as well.
Okay, thank you.
From Texas Juvenile Justice Department and then from our charter school.
Okay. Are there, are there positions that you were wanting to fill that you're not going to be able to fill because of the freeze? Or do you have state positions that you can use in that need?
If, if there is a hiring freeze of all, of our open positions right now, yes, that does mean that there are going to be positions that are direct care staff and essential positions that we would not be able to hire. We are dependent on, on those positions because that helps us meet our ratio to meet PRIA standards. Right now, we are able to meet the state standards, which are twelve to one. With PRIA, Prison Rate Elimination Act, it's eight to one. With that, if we have a hiring freeze and I'm not allowed to hire those positions, I would not be able to meet PRIA standards.
And that's one of those considerations that we hope to address in the SOP. You know, the court has moved heaven and earth. It helps stabilize the staffing model. I mean, prior to, two years ago, I don't believe you were meeting the standards at all.
Correct.
And so I think this is one of those examples where the court worked too hard to get up to a standard for us to go backwards on. And so, you know, obviously that means that we'll have to find other positions and less critical roles. But those would be ones that I, I at least would be, would be recommend moving forward with to keep us in compliance.
I believe that Commissioner Ramsey would want that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct Three. Precinct Four, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Hello, Director Gonzalez and, and team. And I firstly want to say that I appreciate you and your team's commitment to centering youth and advancing efforts that reduce harm and create better outcomes for, for our communities. And I wanted to start off with what we were just talking about. Um, last year, your vacancy rate showed an impressive turnaround and bucked national trends overall. So your current, I would love to know what your current vacancy rate is and what strategies and practices contributed to the, that we just talked about.
Absolutely. Thank you. Last time I checked, we were down to six percent. What we did, when our numbers went down, um, when we were able to reduce our footprint, and then with COVID, what we did was looked at some of our positions and eliminated some positions and used that money to increase salaries. At that time, although we are one of, we are the largest county in Texas, our salaries for our direct care staff were much lower than the other urban counties and even lower than some of our neighboring smaller counties. And so we were competing with our neighboring counties for staff. So when we adjusted those positions um, and eliminated some, we used that money to increase the salaries of our direct care staff for the kids. And I mean, for the staff in our facilities and for our probation officers. And that was able to help us fill those positions that we had a hard time filling. Then subsequently, the state offered a, all of the counties, a salary adjustment grant, which increased the salaries again. And that's helped us been able to recruit and maintain our staff.
That's great to hear. Um, and how many employees would you estimate are directly benefiting from the recently approved increase in minimum wage for the county?
That number was, uh, I'm sorry, I know Janie Moreno was here with us. Uh, I don't know if she can. Yes. So, yeah, so that would be all of our YDO, our youth development officers, direct care staff, and a significant number of our probation officers were able to benefit from that. And then, of course, uh, a lot of our support services, our support staff.
And with the contracting, contractor rates, do you have a lot of contractors that were able to benefit from that increase as well?
Uh, no. Yeah. They, they already had good amounts.
Wonderful. And will there be any reductions in services from the proposed offsets in our budget, in your budget? I know that we, when we've spoken, you've talked about the, um, the disability advocates having been a wonderful addition that you were able to fund with your surplus. Will there be any other impacts?
Yes. So actually, we currently have a contract with Disability Rights Texas to provide the education advocacy. During COVID, we supplemented those services by reassigning staff to assist with education advocacy. We knew that our kids were going to need that advocacy going back into school post-COVID. Um, and then also that transition from our facilities to their homeschools. So those were those positions that were helping with that. With our, the proposed budget cuts, those are the positions that we're going to eliminate. And that comes out to about two of those advocate positions. But it's not going to impact the work that Disability Rights is doing. To offset that, what we've done is we are training our case managers in the facilities to be able to provide that advocacy in that transition from the, the charter school back to their homeschool. The staff impacted will not be laid off. They've been reassigned to teach in positions within the charter school. So they're still serving kids.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
County Judges' Office, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Hi, thank you for being here and for all that you do. So you spoke a little bit already about retention. I wanted to ask a little bit more about that. In your initial service enhancement requests, you had included funding for several positions within your residential mental health services. So what are the possible implications of not having this funded?
Right now, we're having a difficulty, a difficult time hiring or filling our mental health professional positions. Our salary for them are still lower than most others. It's hard keeping up with, like the Harris Center. And being that a lot of our mental health staff work in the detention center and in our facilities, unlike other places, they don't have the opportunity to be able to work from home. And so that's really causing us a, a challenge. Without additional funding to be able to, uh, to really match the, the salary of the overall market, we're going to continue to have a difficult time filling those positions and then meeting the, the mental health needs of our young people in our facilities, which is significant.
Thank you. And so looking at the proposed budget, JPD is one of the departments that has been identified as having a historical surplus. Can you elaborate on where that surplus might come from within your department and, and just what might contribute to that surplus?
Absolutely. That surplus is typically, usually, always coming from our labor side. And that's because, again, of, it's, it's kind of just what, what happens when you are operating a residential facility and, and hiring those direct care staff who work in a facility, who work twenty-four seven, our shifts are twenty-four seven. Those are hard positions to keep um, and, and to, to fill and to retain. But I will say again, with our vacancy rate being as low as it is, we've done, I think we've done a really good job in, um, in being able to recruit and retain. The challenges are still there because of the nature of, of those positions. And really, what I think, when I look at our projected labor surplus of about one point five, that's, that's um, not that many positions that are left unfilled. I'm sorry, this is Dr. Matt Shelton, our Assistant Executive Director.
Even though that our vacancy rate is low, the turnover rate is still pretty high in detention. It's just the type of job and the type of work that that kind of goes hand in hand with.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
And with that, it's, it's not just that. It's our, our nurses as well and our teachers. Again, with the less than competitive salaries we have, it's difficult to get those filled.
Um, and, and what have you previously used these surplus funds for that have been important for the operations and, and functioning of your department?
A few years ago, we used those to increase the salaries of our direct care staff, the, the staff in our facilities, our probation officers, those staff that are, uh, providing direct services to our kids and our communities and in the facilities. That's, that was the biggest thing. A few years ago, we asked to use some of those to create a community reinvestment fund to be able to fund grassroots organizations, very small ones that weren't able to apply or compete for county contracts because they lacked the capacity or the infrastructure to do so. We identified the most impacted communities and then found these small grassroots organizations and helped fund them to help build a capacity to better serve justice-involved young people. And that was two million dollars that was invested into that particular fund. And I think that was also a really wise investment of those funds.
And making it really quick, if I could jump in, just because I think um, JPD is probably the best example of a department being strategic about its budget. So historic, I think in two thousand twenty-two, JPD was running almost a three million dollar labor surplus. And the reason for that was the salaries were just brutally uncompetitive compared. So we worked together on a staffing model that said, hey, if their positions are going to be vacant anyways, why don't we reduce our turnover by taking some of those vacant positions and converting them into higher salaries for the staff? They filled their, they filled up their slots. They got so fully staffed and came back and said, we are out of compliance with our staffing ratios. Here's how much it would cost to get us to the, to compliance. And we worked together and got a sub, got an enhancement done last year or two years ago. Forgot which.
Two years ago, yes.
Two, two years ago, and they've been able to manage around that. So like for the departments that haven't had, have had historical surpluses, you know, O and B worked with those departments to figure out, is there a better model to be able to achieve the same goal? And in this case, I think it was probably the most successful we've had, we've seen so far.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Precinct One, you will now have five minutes.
You just mentioned the Youth Justice Community Reinvestment Fund. Can you talk a little bit more about the impacts? And then I see that was listed as an enhancement request. So under the proposed budget, what will happen with that fund and consequently, consequently the impacts of it?
Absolutely. Um, so I think our greatest loss is going to be the elimination of the reinvestment fund. That fund was specifically established to support these grassroots organizations in those communities most impacted. And when I say most impacted, what we did is we looked at our numbers to see which communities were overrepresented by our referrals. We identified those communities, and we actually ran out into those communities to find those small grassroots organizations and wanted to be able to provide them the resources that they needed to be able to do that. So we, we have done that. Right now, we are funding three community-based organization. One out in Pasadena Baytown area, one in Third Ward, and the other is in the northeast part of Harris County. We did fund other organizations, about four others. But they're, they're, they're no longer being funded. Uh, these are the ones that were able to meet all of the requirements and continue to do so successfully. They, each of these organizations started with a smaller community that they were serving and now have extended their services. For example, My Chapel was primarily serving Pasadena, and now they've extended to Baytown. Young People in Action, uh, when one of the other vendors or grantees dropped, they were able to extend out into the Acres Homes area. Workshop Houston rent from Third Ward out to Katy when we lost a grantee there. So losing this money, I think, is going to have a, a huge impact in those impacted communities. When you look at these communities, these are some that fifteen years ago were not those impacted communities. And I think through gentrification in Harris County, a lot of those traditionally impacted communities have changed. And those folks living there have been dislocated and moved to uh, other, uh, other areas of town. Unfortunately, those services didn't follow them. So what we found was that these areas didn't have a lot of those services. And so this fund was able to help those, again, small grassroots organizations, uh, provide the services that are needed.
And so to make sure I understand, if the funding for the Youth Justice Community Reinvestment Fund no longer exists, will those services either be eliminated or reduced in these communities?
They're going to be significantly reduced. We won't be able to have, we don't have the money to be able to continue to pay them out of our budget. And again, since these are smaller grassroots organizations, I, I think it's going to be a significant hit for them not to get these funds.
And then long-term, what do you think the impacts might be on our overall community safety and on those kids' engagement?
It will definitely be negatively impacted. I would see higher recidivism in those areas. And, and again, keep in mind that these are highly impacted areas.
Thank you. And thank you for your work and your strategy and innovation in doing this. You also had a number of other enhancement requests, and in light of this budget, we have not really been focused on enhancement requests. Can you describe some of the other opportunities that you had been looking into and were hoping to invest in or would still advocate for if the funding were available?
Absolutely. Um, I, I think one of the, the key things that we really have to hit on is um, prioritizing the needs of our residents and our students identified with special education challenges, since we are running a charter school. Currently, nearly fifty percent of our students face educational deficits. Traditional methods such as lowering expectations, simplifying tasks, and restricting access to advanced curriculums, those are ineffective. Those don't work. Uh, instead, we need a strategic root cause approach that provides targeted interventions and meaningful supports to unlock the true academic growth of our students. Our success in reducing the population detention center and in our residential facilities is great. But it has unintentionally reduced our student enrollment and consequently our charter schools revenue. So to truly meet these students' needs, we must secure general fund dollars to supplement the cost of specialized education programs. Ignoring these needs, it, it just will continue the cycle. Okay. Well, it's just going to continue the cycle of unmet educational needs, which then we know can lead to further delinquency with our young people.
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you have no time remaining. Precinct Three, you have two minutes and fifty-seven seconds remaining. And Precinct Four, you have fifty-five seconds remaining.
I'll waive our time as well.
Thank you, Court Offices. And Director, you will now have two minutes for closing remarks.
All right. Uh, in closing, I'd like to emphasize that as we finalize the budget process, our top- In closing, I'd like to emphasize that as we finalize the budget process, our top priority remains ensuring public safety while also continuing to provide the service necessary for the rehabilitation and successful reintegration of our youth. The investments we've made in transforming our system from reducing reliance on punitive measures to expanding community-based services have already shown significant positive outcomes. These results demonstrate that we can achieve both a safer community and better outcomes for youth. We understand the financial constraints we face, and we're committed to continue working closely with the Office of Management Budget to do what's needed within the proposed budget to meet these priorities. Our work is not just about numbers, it's about ensuring that the investments we make today are ones that will continue to protect public safety and foster long-term success for the youth we serve. I'm confident that with the proposed budget, we'll continue to move forward with our mission, balance in safety, rehabilitation, and future opportunities for the young people in our care while being responsible stewards of the taxpayer money. Thank you for your continued support and for recognizing the importance of these efforts.
Thank you, Director, and thank you to Juvenile Probation.
Thank you.
We will next hear from the Institute for Forensic Sciences.
Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us, Institute for Forensic Sciences. We will begin with 3 minutes for your presentation, then each court office will have 5 minutes for questions, and then you'll have 2 minutes for closing remarks.
My name is Julie Prine. I'm the Chief of Staff at the Institute of Forensic Sciences, and I am joined by Dr. Pramogum Penni, who is our Deputy Chief Medical Examiner. As you already know, IFS provides medical examiner services and crime laboratory services for Harris County. The medical examiner's office certified over 6,400 deaths in 2024, with 5,200 of those coming into the office for examination, which averages 14 to 15 decedents a day. The crime laboratory received evidence for almost 23,000 cases in 2024. That is from 87 different law enforcement agencies in the county, as well as from the medical examiner's office. All of those offices are within Harris County, with the exception of the Houston Police Department, who have their own separate forensic science lab. All of our testing is provided in-house by county employees. We have no outsourcing, and we have virtually no current case backlog on the crime laboratory side. In July 2025, the latest data I have, the average turnaround time for drug chemistry cases for those who are in jail was 11 days. For DWI cases, it was 16 days. Our FY '26 budget request was approximately $54 million total. The proposed budget that we received is $45.5 million, approximately. We requested $680,000 in CLS funding and received $382,000. And we requested $9.5 million in service enhancements and did not receive any of those. The larger impact for us financially is that we also have a yearly federal grant of about $1.2 million that goes to provide crime lab, sexual assault kits, testing supplies, and staff overtime. That federal grant has been discontinued. We will not be receiving that $1.2 million in the next fiscal year. We thank you for your time today. We look forward to answering your questions. And we understand the position that the commissioners are in, but we do want to make sure that everyone is clear that a reduction to our current budget will not only not meet the needs of the future, where we assume the caseload will continue to go up, but it will lead to consequences of delayed testing, delayed reporting, and more people in jail while we're doing that testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Each court office will now have 5 minutes for questions, beginning with Precinct 3.
Thank you very much. I have to tell you, my prior job was as an attorney for 41 years in Harris County, and to hear what you're saying about with the return on your drug and DWI testing, it amazes me. I'm very impressed with that and want to know if the enhancements that you were interested in having, would you share some of those with us?
Sure. The largest ticket item and our top priority is that for several years, and this began before I started with the county seven years ago, we have been perpetually underfunded in our labor budget. For all of our current positions to be funded for an entire fiscal year, we would be at about $4 million behind. What we did this year was we were able to move some of our non-labor to labor to cover some of that, and then we sort of juggle the vacancies we have. So, if we have staff attrition, we're able to look at our vacancies and say, which one is the most important right now? Let's go ahead and focus in on that one and fund it. But we currently have 15 positions that are available on a 300-person staff. We have budget maximums for those, for most of those positions, but what I don't have is available labor funding for those. So, on the labor side, our biggest request was to try to be made whole on our labor budget. On the non-labor side, it is certainly the, the federal grant that we don't expect to receive this year. I'm not sure how we're going to make ends meet. We definitely will not have enough non-labor to move it to labor. So, I honestly, at this point, I don't know how we will get through that part.
What would the non-labor budget need to be to get you with the 15 positions?
The, I'm sorry, the labor budget-
When you were talking about the non-labor budget that you-
The non-labor, we, we moved money over. We moved $1.4 million, I think, to cover labor to get us through the fiscal year. So, we would need that in order to move that amount, but we can't because we also have the federal grant that we'll have to cover by general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Daniel?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
She was talking about the money that they've had to move from non-labor to labor and the, a loss of a grant that's over $1 million. Is that something that you've discussed with them?
So, we, we worked with all county departments on their budget submission. They did submit this, so all loss of grants goes through the enhancement process. So, it was scored and reviewed. Again, if court wants to make an amendment to, to raise, raise their budget, we'll identify alternate savings options.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now. Thank you.
Precinct 4, you will now have 5 minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. So, I think, you know, one of the questions is, of course, around recruitment and vacancies and understand, like, you know, that's an ongoing challenge. Are there strategies that IFS has implemented, anything over the years that have helped and something that we can continue pushing on or need to push on more that can help with some of the, just the recruitment, retention, some of those outside of maybe beyond pay increases?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. Our, our problem is that when we have attrition, what we're losing are staff who are fully-trained, senior-level staff. And generally, we're losing them to neighboring offices. And so, when we replace those staff, we're hiring entry-level people who will then need to be trained. And that's on the crime lab side. I'm going to let Dr. Gunpeni speak on the medical examiner's side because it has unique sort of issues.
Yes. Of the- Hello, Dr. Pramogum Penni. Of those 15 vacant positions, four of them are for assistant medical examiner or forensic pathologist, which are a very highly-trained, highly-educated position, which requires 13 years of education, including medical school, residency, et cetera. Finding replacements if people leave, whether due to seniority or moving out to other positions, is extremely challenging, given the nationwide shortage of forensic pathologists. And so, you know, we thank the courts for allowing us to hopefully keep these four positions of assistant medical examiners as we continue to search. We were able to hire two in July of last year, and we're actively interviewing for one of those four currently, but it's a very slow-going process.
I think, so, if I can cut in, I mean, this is the exact reason why we made the recommendation to go forward with a salary study as opposed to kind of, you know, having more county-wide, having more, a more county-wide cola, because there's just no way you're going to, you know, cola your way to competitive salaries when we're this far behind in certain areas.
And as a lab, I was curious, where do you see, like, cost savings being generated? Are there initiatives that, you know, could be taken with, you know, I don't know, evidence processing, times, other innovative things that you're probably already, you know, doing and have been doing that, again, can, will generate cost savings?
One of the ways we're trying to generate a lower case, a lower report turnaround time is by utilizing the CT machine, which was graciously given to us by the taxpayers of Harris County. We have just initiated the final validation of that machine into our workflow, and we're hoping that that will reduce our caseload by reducing the amount of time taken to evaluate a case properly and provide results for our reports and for families. That's one measure where we're trying to do it on the medical examiner's side, given the fact that we can't just add staff easily.
And do we know how much savings, say, for example, something like this machine will generate and in how much time? And are there other sort of investments like that?
Other, I mean, in terms of an exact cost, the average full examination costs around $3,000, including labor and non-labor. An average external examination, which is what we would shift to if we have enough information generated from the CT scan, would only cost about $1,500 to $1,700.
Got it. Thank you. And I had another question on the grant funding cut, which you said was around, whatever, 1 million. Could you speak to a little bit more about what that funding covered? You know, why was that funding, why was the funding cut? And are the other jurisdictions facing sort of similar types of federal funding cuts? And how are they managing other labs?
The, the grant in particular is a DNA reduction grant. It is focused primarily on our forensic genetics lab, which it covers supplies, kits, and overtime funding for our staff so that they can stay within their turnaround time goals. We have a, a state statute that requires that sexual assault kits be examined within 90 days in our office. We are currently meeting that standard. This has been a longtime grant. We've received every year, certainly for as long as I've been at IFS. Usually, that grant, the application process begins in February or March. There was no application submitted. We reached out to the Department of Justice, and we're told that at that point, they had no plan to release the grant in the coming year. Now, certainly, if the federal government kind of decides at the end of the day that they're going to do it, that would be great, and we will apply again. But at this point, I have no idea why the grant was suspended, other than just general federal grant funding.
Got it. And then, so, the grant funding application timeline is, is when? I'm just trying to understand if there is any hope next year?
Generally, we are provided the application in February or March, given about 30 days to, to provide the application back. But it was not received, not only by us, but by any crime lab across the country.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct 4, County Judges' Office. You will now have 5 minutes for questions.
Hi, thank you for being here, and once again, thank you for being so forthcoming and accessible through the budget process. We really appreciate it. I love, I would love if you could just kind of really lay out for us the potential impact of not only the cuts being proposed on your department, but the service enhancement requests that you submitted not being funded, on your department's ability to process evidence in a timely manner, and then how that then, you know, domino effect impacts other criminal justice departments in our county.
Sure. So, we anticipate a rise in caseload, as we have every year. And particularly with, with an investment that the county is making in more assistant district attorneys and more law enforcement, which we fully support, those commitments will lead to a higher demand for us, and we will not be able to keep up. That's the easy answer. We, we are worried that just at baseline, that with the caseload going up, that we will not be able to process as many cases in a timely manner. But on top of that, we also have a fear that our attrition rate will start to go up, as it did around our, around COVID. Our attrition rate really shot up. And our concern is, not only are we not able to fill the positions we currently have, but that we will lose even more, which will put us into a backlog. And once you get a backlog, it is very hard to climb out of it. So, our, our biggest concerns are that, that our timing will be extended for testing, which will lead to people sitting in jail longer, and also lead to court cases being delayed because we haven't gotten our testing done in time. And we have really prided ourselves on the, certainly on the crime lab side, we have been able to keep up with the demand and to also do additional testing as requested by law enforcement or the district attorney's office. We will no longer be able to, to do that.
Thank you very much. And you touched on it a little bit. I wonder if you can tell us a little bit more about how hiring and retention have been going for your department and what it might mean for your department if there's a hiring freeze that prevents you from filling positions that become vacant or that are already vacant?
Well, I'm going to start with the, the vacancies. So, as I said, we have approximately 15 vacancies right now. If you take away the four forensic pathology positions, they're almost all entry-level. I could hire them. I could hire them right now, but I don't have the labor funding to do it. Our, my other problem, as I already mentioned, is when we lose someone to retirement or because they go to another office, it's almost always a senior staff person who can go to a neighboring office for less casework for more money. But I lose a senior person, and I replace that position with an entry level. And our entry-level people have to be trained for several months, sometimes years, depending on the discipline, before they are able to actually do casework. So, during that time, not only have I lost a position, which is now an entry level, but I also have someone who's training that person, so they're not doing casework. So, it, it just is sort of a snowball running down a hill, if you will. So, so that's our retention issue right now. And I'm so sorry, I forgot the rest of your question.
The potential of a hiring freeze and how that might impact you?
Hiring freeze, I'm so sorry. We certainly, I'm, and I'm sure you will hear this from everyone, we certainly would appreciate an exemption on a hiring freeze so that we can continue to hire based on our priorities. And certainly, if a unicorn of a forensic pathologist happens to come our way, we want to know that, that we have a PCN that we could fill right then. And OMB has worked with us on, on trying to make sure that we will have that funding if we need it, if that person walks through our door, because it's so hard to find those people. But if we had a hiring freeze, I'm not quite sure how that would work, what positions would be taken away. But as I said, I could hire them all. I could hire them all before October, I think, but I don't have the available labor balance to do it.
Thank you. That's all my time.
Thank you, County Judges' Office. Precinct 1, you will now have 5 minutes for questions.
Hi, thanks for coming. So, speaking about rising jail population due to, to the anticipated delays, are there any other costs to other justice stakeholders, such as the courts, district attorney's office, that you would expect if these, if these cases were to be delayed, if you were to develop a backlog? Just costs outside- Um, just costs outside of the jail system itself?
Yes. So if a, if we are unable to get cases tested in a timely manner, that pushes the entire system back. So um, appropriate charges can't be brought without knowing what that substance is, what that DWI level was. Um, it also means that the courts are having to be delayed uh, because of that testing not being done appropriately and, and as quickly as we would like. And then, um, again, the, that's sort of a crime lab version of events that things will go too long. And I'm gonna let Dr. Campenny answer your question from the ME side.
Yes, the other half, of course, of the equation is the medical examiner service, which deals with humans. And it's not just a lab test, you know? If we have a delay in our ability to produce our reports in a timely manner, we have loved ones who are deceased, they don't have any answers to the cause of man or death. Uh, whether that's, they just don't know how they died or why they died. Uh, maybe they're waiting on insurance or probate court, et cetera. Uh, without answers from our medical examiner service, a lot of these families don't have answers. And that, we don't want to protract that any more than we already have with our current deficit of forensic pathologists.
Thank you. And are there any statutory requirements which you are concerned about being able to meet with the current proposed budget or if further cuts were made? Um, just any particular that you are concerned, you have concerns about? Um, I know that you have many that you have to meet and that you are meeting, but just to make sure that like baseline level of service is going to be met?
Uh, currently on the medical examiner side, our biggest accrediting agency is the National Association of Medical Examiners. Uh, one of the stipulations they have is the number of cases per doctor. Uh, currently, with the usage of contract pathologists, which we have currently been able to use in this past fiscal year, we were meeting their phase requirements. Uh, calculating forward, if we did not have those contract pathologists, which was one of the service enhancements we requested, we would already be violation of one of those uh, statutes. And there's a good chance that by the end you would be in, in violation of their complete uh, lack of accreditation standard uh, with the number of cases per doctor if we did not have uh, those contract pathologists.
All right. And um, so just a clarification. So the 1.2 million grant, there's, that is not currently in the proposed budget to backfill the federal grant that is ending for that amount?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, how, do you have a, off the top of your head, or if you have this number prepared, like how much that would be delaying the processing of cases that require that testing? Or the costs that would, that would incur by not having that money available to your department?
Uh, uh, I see where you're trying to get to. I actually don't have that number yet. I can certainly um, provide you with more information on that. I think w- we are still kind of in a, we're not sure, I mean, we, we have a list internally of things we could easily cut, you know, easily cut. We can cut training funding, we can cut, um, you know, we can't cut parking because we pay that to TMC, we can't pay. But there are things we could cut, training being the one that's easiest. Supplies, we could cut back on some of our supplies. Um, but I'm not sure how we would make up a 1.2 million dollar deficit for federal funding that we have kind of grown used to having. Um, as far as what that would do to our timing, my guess is that it would make it far more difficult for us to meet our ninety day requirement that for sexual assaults, we test within ninety days. It would be difficult for us to meet that deadline if we don't have the supplies that are required for DNA testing.
And that requirement is statutory?
Texas statute.
All right, thank you. Uh, I've waived my time.
Thank you, Precinct One. Precinct Two, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Uh, thank you both for being here today. Um, continuing on my colleague's questions about the loss of the federal grant, um, I know you mentioned that there could be some potential slowdowns in sexual assault kits. Um, are there any other areas where you would see uh, slower processing times?
Yes, so that is primarily a DNA grant, but we also utilize federal grant money for overtime in firearms processing and in toxicology. Uh, without that overtime availability for our staff, they're going to be slower turning things around. So it will include toxicology, it will include uh, firearms testing, it will include DNA. To a lesser extent, it may include drug chemistry, um, just because of the supply issue, but um, and also our trace evidence. So it will be felt on the crime lab side.
Um, and you've been very clear on how a potential hiring freeze would impact your department. Um, not to put Daniel on the spot, but um, is IFS the department that you would recommend to be exempted from that hiring freeze?
Not necessarily exempted, but a total exemption, but I do believe, I, I feel comfortable recommending certain positions, specifically the medical examiners be exempted along with some of their critical, tho- those kind of long um, training period positions.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the proposed budget allocates three hundred and eighty-two thousand to acquire equipment necessary to ensure accreditation standards for the institute. Um, is this cost to acquire new equipment? Um, because old equipment has reached the end of its usable life? Is there new technology that's available or, um, what's the story there?
That three hundred and eighty-two was what we received in CLS requests. So our, our initial request for CLS was six hundred and eighty thousand based on vendors uh, raising their costs, inflation, fuel prices, things that we just had no control over increasing. Um, the three eighty-two is what was provided to us for our CLS request.
Okay, understood. Um, and I know that you're competing nationally uh, for staff. Um, what can we do to help you get the talent that you need in IFS? I mean, I know that um, we have some partnerships with local colleges to help build out pipelines for your staff, but is there anything that commissioners' court offices can do to help?
Uh, in terms of forensics education, uh, there has been a nationwide movement to uh, empower colleges at university level, people to train toward a forensic scientist role versus just training in a basic science and then trying to shoo-han that person into forensics. Uh, we do work with uh, our local, the San Houston State and other local uh, colleges and universities in trying to get people into forensics. Anything that uh, would work in, in terms of improving STEM education? Cause that's the basic underpinnings of all forensics is science, technology, education, math. So, uh, yeah, anything that could help in terms of STEM, anything to help in terms of just forensic science and moving people into a, a practical science perspective?
All right, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Precinct Two. Precinct Three, you have one minute and forty-three seconds remaining. Thank you. And no other court offices have any time remaining, so uh, we will now move to two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you all, um, uh, for making time for us and for your questions during this process and giving us an opportunity to, to vent, if nothing else. Um, I, we completely understand the position that the commissioners are in. We understand that our little slice of this pie is our priority, not necessarily everyone's priority. Um, and we appreciate everything that Daniel and OMB have done to help us along this road as well. But the bottom line is with loss of our federal grant funding, plus the offset, we have a deduction of 1.7 million from current levels. And I know there are larger departments who have much bigger offsets that they're trying to deal with. But with this budget, we will not be able to keep up with caseload demands in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, there will be extended times for testing and report completion, leading people to be in jail longer than necessary, court hearings being delayed, as well as a building backlog of cases, which could take months or years to overcome. We also have a fear, as I mentioned, of attrition. We're working our people very hard as it is. If our caseload goes up and their salaries do not, I couldn't blame them for looking elsewhere. And they don't have to go far. There are surrounding counties, there are state labs, there is the city lab. They don't have to even move to find a different position. And then I am left with a senior level PCN that I have to reclassify as an entry level position and then train them. And then the minute they become certified, they leave. So I become a de facto farm system for scientists. And that does not keep us at the top of the nation in forensic sciences, which I believe we are today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Institute for Forensic Sciences and to court offices. Uh, we will now break until two PM for lunch, when we will resume with a presentation from the district attorney's office. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Court Offices. It is 2 PM and we are ready to resume our budget hearings for the day. Our first presentation this afternoon comes from the District Attorney's Office, who will have three minutes for their opening presentation. Then there will be five minutes for questions from each court office, beginning with beginning with Precinct 4, and then you'll have two minutes for closing remarks.
All right, we're good. I want to commend you all on starting right on time. I don't think I've ever seen that happen. Thank you. I just want to begin by thanking this Commissioner's Court for their collaboration and their trust in what we've been able to do at the DA's office. We have really been successful in a short period of time. I know that Tanya talks about the jail population and the way that we've been able to really reduce that in meaningful ways all the time. And we're going to go on with the presentations about that. But it is in large part thanks to this court that we were able to do so much so quickly. By growing our Mental Health and Diversion Bureau, by revamping and growing our intake bureau, we've been able to deflect people prior to ever getting into the criminal justice system to the tune of more than 1,000 less people in the county jail today as opposed to the beginning of this year. And we're doing it the right way. We're fixing it systemically. Meaning, the next catastrophic event, we live in Houston, we know it's coming. We can't be right back where we were. And so that's what we've been doing from the ground level, being able to fix it. And it's working. Jail population is down, violent crime is down across the board. And we are doing it meaningfully and the right way. But we can't get complacent. We've got to continue what we have implemented. And thanks to the supplemental budget that this court gave us, we were able to again redouble our efforts around domestic violence and getting the victim assistance coordinators and the licensed social workers to really help our survivors be successful and re-enter society in a meaningful way as well. So I am so excited that you all have given us this trust. And I'm going to sit down and let my two experts in the budget answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Thank you, DA Tier. We will now move to questions from court offices, beginning with Precinct 4, and moving on to the County Judges' Office.
Hi, thank you so much for being here. I wanted to start just by asking you to highlight some of the major successes coming from your office since you were sworn in. And then kind of a two-part question. I would love to know what the impact will be on your ability to maintain that momentum, given the cuts being proposed and some of the service enhancement requests that you submitted not being included in the budget.
Sure, I can take that one. My name's Chandler Rain. I'm the First Assistant District Attorney at the Harris County DA's office. It would take up a lot longer than a half hour if I started highlighting our successes since Sean's taken office. But each and every one of our successes has been based on the work that our prosecutors, paralegals, administrative support, and investigators do every single day, both in court and outside of court. And I was in front of this body a couple of weeks ago talking about the fact that most of our budget is labor. It's the men and women who show up every day to do the work that we ask them to do and that our community asks them to do. Some of the, I think, key highlights that I would want to focus on really is the way that we have kind of rethought how to assist the sheriff's office with regards to jail population. And from not just day one, but really during the transition period when we started meeting with not just this court and staffers, but also our partners in law enforcement. One of the things that we realized is that there was a real genuine problem at the jail with regards to their population and what they could do based on the reality of not just their budget, but their staff. And as we all know, that resulted in outsourcing. I believe last year we had $54 million in outsourcing that was coming from the Harris County Jail. So we started to think, what can we do to not just push towards community safety, but also push towards a fiscal responsibility? And making sure that we could do what we could do to help this county save that $54 million. And I think that we've been really successful. There were almost 10,000 people in the Harris County Jail in February of this year, and we have seen since then a steady decline in that population to where now we've stayed pretty steadily under 8,700 over the last few weeks. And we're really proud of that. And we've done it safely. We have done it in a way that has focused our resources on deflection, on diversion, but also on prosecuting violent offenders to make sure that our community isn't just safer, but feels safer. When the District Attorney's Office is healthy, that's what we get to bring to the table. And we get to tell the people of Harris County, the numbers are what they are. Crime is going down, but you still feel like it's not. And so we need to make sure that our community feels safer as well. And that's one of the things that we've been doing. Very, very proud of that. Another thing that I would want to highlight is our Special Victims Bureau, under the leadership of one of our Bureau Chiefs, Angela Welton. And they have tried over 100 cases this year out of just that one bureau. That bureau houses our Human Trafficking Division, our Adult Sex Crimes Division, and our Crimes Against Children Division. These are the worst of the worst offenders. And they've tried over 100 cases. They have spent countless tireless hours focusing on some of the most violent offenders in Harris County. And they've been very, very successful doing it. But the model that they have done is one that we want to take to the rest of the DA's office as well. It is this one-on-one mentorship and partnership with an experienced prosecutor and a relatively new prosecutor to make sure that not only are we developing new prosecutors into career-qualified expert prosecutors, but also letting our experienced prosecutors do the thing that we pay them to do. Do the thing that they took an oath to do, which is to keep our community safe. With regards to some areas where I think that we may have to make some very difficult decisions if there were potential cuts to our budget, one of the things that I would want to focus on is our Mental Health and Diversion Desk at the Harris County Jail. For the first time in the history of that desk, we're going to be staffing it overnight. And so, starting this Wednesday, so the 3rd of September, we're going to have prosecutors who are typically there from 8:00 to 5:00, are going to be manning that diversion desk Wednesday through Saturday from 5:00 to midnight, and then into Sunday morning, midnight to 8:00. And they play a huge role in working with law enforcement officers to identify individuals that may on paper seem as though they're a risk to the community, but when you dive into it, you see that they're really a bigger risk to themselves. And so making sure that we're diverting those cases in a way that keeps our community safe, but also helps get them the help that they need in that moment. These are the things that we have done to think outside of the box. It's not just prosecuting the most violent cases, but it's kind of reimagining the way that we prosecute cases in general.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I also wanted to ask about some of the specific service enhancements that you all had submitted. I'm thinking of the positions for appellate and writs, and then also conviction integrity. Can you talk a little bit about what the impact might be of not having those funded specifically, given some recent changes in legislation?
Sure. But one of the things that I just spoke about with regards to something that we're very proud of is our Special Victims Bureau. Each and every one of those cases that results in a conviction can also result in an appeal. And one day down the line, a possible writ. And where we've got to have prosecutors who handle those appeals, who respond to defense appeals in front of the first, 14th, and Court of Criminal Appeals, as well as handling those writ hearings. And so, the more cases we're trying, the more folks that we're going to need in our post-conviction bureau to make sure that we're really focusing on making sure that the righteous convictions, when we get them in court, are upheld. And then with regards to our Conviction Integrity Unit, this is a team of prosecutors. In fact, we just had an interview with somebody last week who we're hoping to hire into that team. Their job is ensuring the integrity of the criminal justice system from beginning to end. These are the prosecutors who are looking back post-conviction, sometimes after a writ hearing, after the entire appellate process is going on, and responding to requests from our community, sometimes from law enforcement. Can y'all give this one another look? There are going to be times when they look at cases and they say, "We believe that this was a valid conviction." But it can make all of us feel better about the integrity of the system. And there are going to be times when they recommend to the District Attorney some kind of relief. That also helps us sleep at night, when we know that we're not just focusing on being ethical prosecutors with integrity on the front end, but we're ensuring the integrity of the whole system on the back end.
Thank you, County Judges' Office. Precinct 1, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Just want to say thank you so much for your work. We know how hard you and all of your team have been working, and it really shows. And it's so important for our entire community's safety to prosecute when appropriate and not when appropriate. You mentioned your Mental Health Bureau, and I wanted to ask specifically, if the District Attorney's Office is not funded at its current level of service budget, what do you think would be the impacts on the mental health diversion work, whether it's specifically that diversion desk or other parts?
You know, when we started in January, there were 33 total folks assigned to our Mental Health and Diversion Bureau. And we've got, I believe, 46 right now. And so we've really focused on expanding this area of prosecution, because it wasn't traditionally thought of as prosecution, but that's the way that we've thought of it. Is what can we do from a staffing model to make sure that we're putting our resources in a place that are going to help a part of our community that maybe shouldn't be involved in the criminal justice system in the front end? It's so important to us that we maintain the folks that we've got there, but long-term, we'd like to grow that area of the office as well. Back in April of this year, this court gave us a supplemental budget of $7.6 million. Some of those folks were in our Mental Health and Diversion Bureau. Some of them, we've already been able to recruit and fill those spots. Some were still recruiting for positions, because we're being very, very intentional about the type of people that we're hiring and then transferring over to that division. Because the work that they do is not, it's not traditional prosecution. It's not always trials. It's not always pleas. Sometimes it's really diving into someone's mental health history to make sure that we can get them out of the system in a way that's safe, not just for them, for their family, for their caregivers, and for the rest of the community. That takes bodies. That takes prosecutors, paralegals, administrative support, and investigators being assigned there. Our goal is to continue to grow that part of the office. And I think that it has played a pretty pivotal role in the jail population decrease that we've seen. Having prosecutors really focus on these cases from an eye of should they be in the system, yes or no, is a way that we have seen that we decrease the amount of people, not just in the criminal justice system, but in the jail. It's not just a decrease in population at the Harris County Jail that we've seen. It's a decrease in caseloads that we've seen pretty consistently over the last nine months. We're proud of it, but like Sean said earlier, there's still more work to be done. A lot of that work will be done in our Mental Health and Diversion Bureau.
Thank you. And just following up on that, would you be able to keep the full staffing at the diversion desk if you didn't have your full CLS budget, or is that one of the things that might be at risk?
So that, the funds for that come out of, well, it's overtime is the way that we're staffing that. So we've got people who are full-time lawyers, who have a day job, and then the way that we're paying for that is with overtime. It's very similar to the way that we staff our intake division after 5:00 PM. Is we've got regular lawyers, regular admins, regular investigators who are showing up at 5:00 o'clock and working that desk from 5:00 until 8:00 AM the following morning. My hope is that we can maintain our current level of service so that we can continue to staff the mental health desk as well as our intake bureau the way that we've done it now, because it is shown to be effective. Getting back to a model where you have experienced prosecutors on the phone with law enforcement has shown that it decreases the amount of time that our law enforcement officers are on the phone with prosecutors. And we are now at a place where we're under two minutes on a wait time for officers. We were hearing complaints from officers at the beginning of the year that they'd be on the phone for 45 minutes, sometimes an hour. The same thing with the Mental Health and Diversion Desk. We have to have that overtime money in order to staff those desks. I worked a lot of intake shifts at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning when I was a line prosecutor. Wouldn't have done it for free.
Understandable. We've talked about your CLS budget, and I know that you had positions that had been ARPA-funded and then were converted, but my understanding is they're not included in the CLS budget. You've referenced them a couple of times at hearings before. Can you describe what those people are doing right now and what the impacts would be if you were able to retain them or not?
Of course. So at the beginning of this year, we came to the court and asked effectively, "How do you want us to handle the folks that we had in ARPA?" A lot of folks in our homicide bureau were on ARPA. In fact, I found out towards the end of last year that my PCN was an ARPA PCN when I was a chief in our homicide division. The court recommended that we put everybody in general funds, and that was approved in January of this year. So currently, we have no one in an ARPA-funded PCN. Everybody ended up on general fund. It's about $4.4 million of folks. If that $4.4 million is not included in our budget, then it's effectively a cut of $4.4 million. And what we would have to do is really focus on how we are able to make some very difficult decisions. We do not plan to cut folks. I mean, these are the prosecutors and the admins and the paralegals and the investigators who are doing the good work that we've asked them to do. So what we would really be focusing on is things like overtime. That's where we would be ending up making some of these cuts. Of course.
Thank you, Precinct 1. Precinct 2, you will now have five minutes for questions.
First of all, thank you so much for the exceptional work that you've done so far this year and really turning that office around. It is deeply appreciated. The current budget proposes, I think it's close to a $4 million offset. How would that impact your department?
So again, we're focusing back in all the ways that we have found a way to be innovative. And all of the things that we have done have required our staff to do a lot more with what we've got. And at the current CLS of $145.2 million, that's what we're asking them to do it at right now. So cutting that and going to a lesser number would still, we would still be asking our staff to do more with even less though, now. And they'll do it. I mean, I'm telling you, I know these folks, we've got almost 900 employees. They are pound for pound some of the hardest-working public servants that I've ever had the privilege to work with. They will do it, but it's going to hurt. And so, this court has always been so supportive of us and our office and the mission that we have, and we look forward to that continuing support.
Absolutely. And you mentioned being fully staffed now at the diversion desk and the JPC. And so those will be in-person staff, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, great. And your budget supports two major priorities for Commissioner's Court, Mental Health Diversion and Domestic Violence. I wanted to ask you a question specifically around how your budget provides services for survivors of intimate partner violence. Could you elaborate a little bit more on the role of the DA's office in supporting survivors of DV outside of just prosecuting offenders, and how do you partner with local nonprofit service providers in that space?
Sure. So Sean entrusted a career prosecutor by the name of Mary McFadden to run our Domestic Violence Bureau. She'd been a big part of our Domestic Violence Team as the division chief under the previous administration. But our goal was to expand the work that we were doing with regards to domestic violence. The numbers are truly shocking when you start looking into the numbers of domestic violence-related homicides. Our goal has never been to just successfully prosecute those homicides when they happen, but to do everything that we can as members of law enforcement to decrease the number of domestic violence homicides. That means that we've got to get to these survivors of domestic violence early and get them the resources that they need to see a way out of a very, very bad situation. So to that end, under Sean's leadership, what they've done is started really, really focusing their time and attention on high-risk offenders. These are the individuals that we know have several calls to service. Even if they don't have a lengthy criminal history, we know that somebody has been contacting police multiple times, focusing not just on names and numbers, but addresses, to try and focus in on where do we know that there is, there are statistics, there is data that shows this individual is in a domestic violence relationship, and what can we do to get them resources to get out of that relationship? And it's not just working with partners outside of law enforcement and inside of law enforcement, but we've really kind of rethought the way that we're working with that entire apparatus. I mean, talking to consulates and saying, "When you've got individuals who are citizens of your country, when they're coming to you and saying that they're in this situation, give them this pamphlet so they know the numbers to call in our office. So they know the numbers to call in other areas where people are providing resources to survivors of domestic violence." Because ultimately, I think it is incumbent on all of us in law enforcement, not just to prosecute and investigate the next murder when it happens, but to do everything that we can to stop it. And we've been truly focused on that for the last nine months.
Thank you. And speaking of partnering with law enforcement, in the Human Trafficking Division, how do you partner with law enforcement and nonprofits to mitigate the level of human trafficking we've seen in recent years?
Yeah, one of the things that I've been really proud of is the amount of time that we've spent, and I'll just give you an example, working with people as we all prepared not just the county, but the city of Houston and our surrounding municipalities for what we know is going to be a very interesting time when the World Cup comes down here for 37 days next year. And so, one of the things that we were singularly focused on initially was how do we deal with the fact that there is a very large probability that there's an increase in human trafficking around that time? So what we did is we took one of the most senior prosecutors that's currently in the office, and we reassigned her to our Human Trafficking Division with this kind of purpose of making sure that our community and our office was prepared for what we have a very strong feeling is coming next spring. And so just even rethinking the way that we're allocating resources to try and grow a place where we know there's a need for growth. We've also continued to work with law enforcement to restart some of these ICAC programs or Internet Crimes Against Children programs and STING so that we are being not just reactive to the human trafficking problem that exists, but proactive and actually trying to find these offenders before they can get to individuals.
Yeah, and I think those AI tools especially would be really helpful in that space.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you so much. You all have been such a breath of fresh air.
Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct 2. Precinct 3, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Yes, sir.
I'm familiar with a lot of it and how very much it needs to be continued and the things that we need to do. Mental health was one of the things, the last time I was in the DA's office, that I was able to create that division. And you have taken it to a whole nother level, and I'm very impressed. The four point four million that you're talking about, is that if you don't have that, that's the part that is going to keep you from doing some of these things that you've been talking about?
So there are basically two things that are proposed in the budget book. One, not in writing. So it's the four point four million that we moved from ARPA into general fund at the beginning of the year.
Right.
And then the recommendation is that we just bring that to the court during this budget season, which is what we've done. So that four point four million has been requested there. That's right. And then the other one would be the three point five million dollar cut that OMB proposed. And so it's really those two things that we would be talking about, excuse me, three point two. So it's those two things that we would be talking about. So it's just over seven million in proposed cuts from our CLS, what we believe would be the one forty-five point two, and then the proposal. And so when we start to think about that amount of money, what we would really be focusing on is some of the programs that we're trying to get up and running right now and some of the spots that we're trying to recruit for right now. Those of you who have JDs know, for us, hiring is really cyclical. We run with the board. And so it's around February and July every year that we really kind of ramp up our hiring, but our recruiting runs year-round. And so we have to be able to give job offers to some of these young candidates right out of law school, otherwise they're going to go somewhere else. And so for us, the cuts would really mean that we can't continue to grow the office in a way that we think we need to in order to focus on all of these programs that we've spoken about.
Do you make preoffers?
Yes, sir, we do.
What is your number right now?
Our number of preoffers? So we just brought in a class on August eighteenth is when they started. We had twenty-five lawyers start on August eighteenth. And those offers started going out months in advance. And so our next class will be starting after the February bar. So it'll be late February of next year, and we're fully prepared to start making offers to that class as well as soon as we know what our budget fully looks like in 2026 because the last thing we want to do is make a promise to a young candidate and not be able to keep it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct Three. Precinct Four, you will now have five minutes.
Good afternoon, DA Tier and team. Thank you so much for being here. One, I will just echo what everyone has said. Thank you so much for your collaboration and just amazing work. And we're really, really glad to see that the funding that this court approved three months ago is, you've done so much with that. So thank you again. I think most of the questions have been covered. My one question would be on SB nine and how you see that impacting your operations and any resources that you envision being needed in the course of the year as SB nine starts to play out or any other legislative changes, thoughts is happening on the state levels.
Sure. The two things that really stand out to me from a budget perspective for the DA's office with SB nine are the intake process. And so there's been some discussion about having a second probable cause docket running on weekends. We would need to staff that. And so I would need to have a person there from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And so that would be two different shifts at overtime, so we would need to staff those. And then I need to have a person there at daytime. So it's one extra person during the day and then two extra shifts every night as long as that second PC docket was running. And we can get everybody those numbers as to how that would break out. The next would be the right to appeal, the bail and bond decisions that are made by the district court judges. There's going to be a cost to that as well, not just in appealing, but also in defending. And so that would go back to our post-conviction bureau and our appellate team.
Okay, thank you. I think my only other question would generally be that, you know, if the current funding is continued, including of course what was funded by the court three months ago, do you, with SB nine and these other changes, do you think that you can maintain the tremendous progress that you all have been showing in the last few months?
With regards to SB nine, I do. We have the team in place right now, ready to go, to deal with just about everything that SB nine will throw us. And it's because of the hard work that they're doing right now. And they all know that SB nine means we've got to work a little bit harder. I mean, if you start running comp and vacation times, I think the DA's office probably has more folks sitting at two hundred and forty than just about any other county department. And they're going to continue the hard work that they're doing. One thing that we have to be able to focus on long-term over the next couple of months is SJR V, Senate Joint Resolution V, and the constitutional bail amendment that'll be on the ballot in November. If and when SJR V passes and there's a constitutional amendment to Section 11 of the Texas Constitution, then we're going to see a need, I think, all over the county for some additional resources, not just from our office, but from the Public Defender's Office, from the Sheriff's Office, pre-trial services, the Clerk's Office as well, because there's going to be a lot of hearings in the afternoon that we're all going to have to staff. And so you may very well be seeing us again in April because there's no real way for us to predict the cost of SJR V to Harris County right now until we see what the numbers really break down at the beginning of next year.
Got it. Thank you. And just outside of just budget legislative stuff, is there anything from your vantage point that Commissioners Court should be thinking about that will, you know, just support your operations and/or if there are any holdups to your ability to deliver, is there anything that, you know, we should be thinking about?
I wouldn't say that there are any holdups in our ability to deliver. One thing that I do want to emphasize is that, this is my first budget process in Harris County, and I have been so impressed with the collaboration, not just from this court and from the judge's office, but also with Administrator Dickerman and his team. I mean, Director Mills, Director Ramos have been incredible during this process, and the collaboration that is existing in this government is very impressive and should be commended as far as I'm concerned. The work that we are doing at the District Attorney's Office is part and parcel to the work that we're trying to do in Harris County as a whole, trying to find ways to keep our community safer. Sometimes that means prosecuting a violent offender to the fullest extent of the law, and sometimes that means deflecting and diverting people. The discussions that are had amongst these offices and the administrative side are very, very productive, and I think long-term, there's a lot of really exciting work that's going to be going into next year, not just next fiscal year, but next calendar year. One area that I know we're going to need growth on to really focus on that is in our grand jury and intake bureau. We have so many ideas about ways that we can decrease the time from case disposition, or, excuse me, from case filing to case disposition, but right now, we don't have the folks to implement some of those plans. And so if there was an area that I thought we could make some pretty monumental change to the numbers that we see, that would be the area, is growing our grand jury division.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Precinct Four. County Judge's Office, Precinct One and Precinct Two, you have no time remaining. Precinct Three, you have two minutes and thirty-one seconds remaining. Thank you. With that, DA Tier, you have two minutes for closing remarks.
I'll see if I can give a minute or two back. But no entity can function, and certainly not function as well as this county does, without people like Chandler, who has been living and dying with this budget for months, and Amy L. But you as well, the staffers, the level of communication that my office has had with every one of you, from OMB and all of this, it's been amazing. Just like Chandler, this is my first foray into the budget. It really does warm my heart that everyone is so intentional and deliberate in making sure we're doing this the right way. I'm just excited that my department gets to be a part of this and to open up and let everyone see what we're able to do when we're able to do it. So thank you all for everything you're doing. As a lifelong Houstonian and Harris County resident, it makes me feel good.
Thank you to the District Attorney's Office. We will now move forward with a presentation from the Public Defender's Office. You will have three minutes for your initial presentation. Then there will be five minutes for questions from each court office, beginning with Commissioner Breones, to be followed by the County Judge's Office. And then you will have two minutes for your closing remarks.
All right. I have prepared remarks.
I have prepared remarks because if I do an opening trial style, we'll be here twenty minutes later. Good afternoon. My name is Genesis Draper. I am the chief defender for the Harris County Public Defender's Office. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about our FY twenty-six budget needs. The Harris County Public Defender's Office is asking the members of court to support the proposed budget without the offsets, but I'd like to set the framework for our discussion of this budget request. As you all well know, the Harris County Public Defender's Office is a government-funded criminal defense firm that represents people accused of crimes in Harris County. At the moment, we represent approximately fifteen percent of that population. The remaining eighty-five percent of the people accused are represented by private attorneys here in the county on an appointment basis. We have seen that cost, we have seen the cost of that representation increase exponentially in recent years, with the cost last year more than doubling. And so I want the court to understand our budget request in this framework. What we are asking is for the county to shift money that will inevitably be spent on indigent defense, paying the private bar, to the Public Defender's Office budget so that we can hire additional lawyers and support professionals and grow our capacity to accept cases. This will allow the county to begin to shift its cost to the fixed and predictable cost of the Public Defender's Office and move away from the variable and rising cost of representation from the private bar. The Harris County Public Defender's Office not only has well-trained attorneys to litigate cases, but we also have social workers, investigators, mitigation specialists, immigration attorneys, psychologists, and a host of other professionals that provide services that help us deliver the highest quality holistic representation. This is why the Public Defender's Office has consistently outperformed the private bar, because we have in-house services that most attorneys don't readily have access to. And when they do, the cost gets billed for those services separately. Our robust in-house team of professionals allows us to provide the highest quality representation at a more affordable and more predictable rate to the county. The short version is that we provide better representation for cheaper. And my office is diligently working on a strategic plan to grow the capacity to do so for at least fifty percent of the people accused of crimes, with a focus on new recruitment and retention strategies. In conclusion, I am asking the court to support the proposed budget without the offsets, shifting money that will be spent on indigent defense inevitably to the Public Defender's Office so that we can hire additional lawyers and support professionals and grow our capacity to accept a larger percentage of the cases. This is the most cost-effective way for the county to provide this statutorily required service. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Each court office will now have five minutes for questions, beginning with Commissioner Breones.
Chief Public Defender, Judge Draper, thank you for being here. Thank you for that presentation and for taking the lead and the helm of our Public Defender's Office.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I know we have talked quite a bit, and this is something I feel incredibly passionate about. We have charged you with a goal to take the PD's office to at least fifty percent of the representation. Can you please walk us through this plan to meet that goal and how your budget requests kind of dovetail to achieve it?
Sure. So what the goal is, of course, is to hire more lawyers. In the past, we have focused a lot of our hiring on lateral hires, which has been really successful at getting us lots of skilled attorneys who have tons of experience. However, it is very difficult to grow to the capacity we need to grow on the backs of lateral hires. And so what we are doing now is shifting our model to hire more attorneys out of law school, similar to how the District Attorney's Office hires, more of a pre-commit-style program. And so we will be bringing on classes of lawyers so that we can fill this pipeline of lawyers who can then go into our district courts. We will still, of course, always do lateral hires, but we will be now bringing in larger classes of lawyers so that we can make that pipeline more robust. So it will be a process to get there for sure, but I do think that we are able to get there in a timely fashion. It's very difficult to predict the amount of time. You know, obviously, our office has grown exponentially in the last few years. So have the case filings, right? And so it's hard to say, you know, well, if we have no pandemic, and if we have no hurricane, and if we don't have more case filings, right? But what I can tell you is that we have a very robust recruitment strategy that includes a new recruitment director and a training director to help us get there.
Excellent. Judge Draper, can you please briefly talk us through your ideas on training as well?
Sure. And so we have a new training director here in our office, and we are now currently in the middle of our first full training cycle for our new class of lawyers. We're about two or three weeks into that program. And so what the goal is, is to bring in lawyers kind of on a class basis so that we have the opportunity to train them all the same way, make sure that they understand and appreciate the need for a holistic model of representation. And so we want all of those lawyers to understand how each of the divisions work together. Additionally, the lawyers that are already there, the training director will provide services to them as well to make sure that we stay up to date on the latest changes like SB nine that hit us just yesterday. If we have a constitutional amendment that hits us on January first, we want to make sure that we stand ready to adjust to all the changes in the law. And so this will, I have over two hundred lawyers there in the office, and so we have to make sure that we have a centralized model of training to make sure that we are all rowing in the same direction and providing the highest level of quality representation.
And Judge Draper, in my last minute and forty-seven seconds remaining, thank you for all the changes you've already made and plan on making. As far as my vote is concerned, I'm deeply committed to fully funding your office so that we can meet and exceed our goal of at least fifty percent. So we've talked a lot about how indigent defense costs, namely, private appointment of counsel, how it's not as high of quality that the PD can provide, and obviously, it costs more, and that has been one of the key drivers of the deficit. So can you, for everyone's knowledge who may be listening, can you just quickly, again, level-set how the investment in the PD's office will deliver a higher quality of justice at a better stewardship of taxpayer resource?
Sure. So let me say to my private attorney friends in the world, we have excellent private attorneys here in the county. The difference in that service, though, and what we provide, is I have an in-house holistic model. So I don't need to go and hire an investigator. I don't need to go and hire an expert in every single instance. I don't need to go and hire a mitigation specialist. I have them at the ready. I have immigration attorneys at the ready to consult on immigration issues, and that makes a very big difference in the representation. And so instead of me having to send the county a bill for my hourly rate, and then a bill for the investigator's hourly rate, and then a bill for the mitigation specialist's hourly rate, it's all rolled up into my budget. You can count the dollars in advance. And so instead of, because when the bill comes due from the private bar, you have to pay it.
Right.
You just need to be able to anticipate what the cost will be, and that's what you do with the Public Defender's Office.
And very briefly, the cap of caseloads, can you briefly talk about that?
Yes. So our lawyers do have a caseload cap, and so it allows them to be able to manage their cases effectively. They don't get overloaded, and they can provide the amount of attention necessary to give quality representation, which is not the case on the private bar side. There isn't a cap. They can be accepting cases here, other counties, other family law cases, all the different types of things that are a lot harder to get a grip on. And so you can much more closely monitor the quality of representation in the Public Defender's Office because of the standards that we have set.
Thank you, Judge Draper.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Breones. County Judge's Office, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Hi, thank you for being here, and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
We're all very excited to see what you'll do with it. At first, can you please talk a little bit about the specific impact that you expect to see to your department and the demand for services that you provide resulting from SB nine, any other recent legislation that has passed, and of course, the constitutional amendment that, if that becomes law in January?
Sure. So what I expect is that our lawyers will have to, just as the District Attorney's Office said earlier, will really have to work double-time to make sure that it doesn't have as serious an impact on our jail population as it could, as we expect it might. And so that may include, of course, additional staffing over at the joint processing se- And so, that may include, of course, additional staffing over at the Joint Processing Center. Again, that might include also work on the appellate end as these appeals go forward, particularly if the constitutional amendment goes forward and you have people that are in custody without bail. Our lawyers will need to stand ready to get up to speed on these cases, do the appropriate investigation, go through the discovery, so that we can still have timely trials, because what we don't want is people to be in jail five, six, four years later because they can't get out and the cases are stacking up. And so, it really will affect every division, not just the bail division, but also our trial divisions. And so, we have to make sure that each and every division is robustly staffed so that we can keep up with it. We do have overtime opportunities. So, for example, yesterday when it, when the law hit, I was on the phone making sure, okay, what has been the immediate impact. And I think we'll see more this weekend what some of the necessary changes will be. Obviously, we stand ready to adjust quickly if we need to with overtime shifts, but eventually, you would have to staff that with a permanent position.
Thank you. I know that there have been some ideas kind of thrown around about revamping some of the district court's emergency response dockets to focus specifically on low-level felonies. I'm curious if you have any thoughts on that, if that is something you would be supportive of?
So, I always have thoughts, but yes. So, I am supportive of that for a number of reasons. I do think that that would allow our attorneys to get in there and get some of these cases tried quickly. Those cases tend to have a smaller volume of discovery, and so, it gives us an opportunity to get through those dockets more quickly. Additionally, you know, just from a defense standpoint, some of our more serious cases, it takes so many resources and so much time. I think that those are best handled in our home court, where our chief prosecutors are highest, most experienced defenders can be there and present in the courtroom without disrupting the flow of the daily court dockets in those courts. So, I would be supportive of our lower-level felonies going to our ERD.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions, so I just want to thank you again for all the work that you're doing, and I mean, coming here and doing this budget hearing so fresh in your role. I'm very impressed, and thank you so much for all that you do. I'll yield my remaining time to Commissioner Breones.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, County Judge's Office. Precinct 1, you will now have five minutes.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here, as well as for your leadership and all of your team's work.
Thank you.
Given the anticipated growth that you've been talking about, are there any foreseeable non-labor costs that we should be aware of, and does this budget address those needs and allow the office to grow as expected or as needed for its strategic plan?
Sure. So, the only non-labor cost I can think of is space, right? And how that cost breaks out, just, I think, kind of depends on the nature of the space issue. But that's our biggest non-labor issue, is space. I have lawyers with nowhere to sit them. I have staff with nowhere to put them. And so, we are actively out of space and growing. And so, that is our biggest non-labor cost in need, and I would want all members of court and the county judge to be aware of that and keep that as a top priority as some of the space planning issues go forward in the county.
Thank you. And I know that you just spoke a little bit about legislative changes, but I just wanted to follow up on that. And if there's anything else, whether it's legislation that's already gone into effect, anticipated, or possible legal and court changes, is there anything that else that we should be aware of as it might impact your office, or just given the different roles that you've been in, in the criminal legal system in this county, that you think we should be paying attention to as we look at the next year and years and impacts on costs and people?
Sure. Exactly. I've been the lawyer working the overnight shift at JPC. I've been the judge presiding over the case, and now the defender, trying to work out the processes. So, it really is, I think what I would want the court to be aware of is, it's really difficult to think about what the impact will be in advance. This county runs on a very, like, thin error of margin, a very thin margin when it runs, when it talks about initial arrests and how the JPC operations run. And so, any change, even a change in a form, can really add hours to the process, and so, we have to keep that in mind. A legislative change, and heaven forbid, a constitutional amendment, will make it extremely difficult for us to continue with the progresses that we've made, because also, in addition to the processes kind of being down to a science, we have very limited space at the JPC. And so, there's been talk of like an additional docket. I don't have an additional space to put a public defender. We don't have an additional desk over there for them to even interview clients, and so, we're going to have to get creative with some of the virtual options to make sure that we can still appropriately staff it. So, there are some considerations, but we will do our absolute best to minimize the disruption to the county.
Thank you for both the warning and the flexibility. And it's just, if there's anything else in addition to what we've already discussed that this court can do to advance the goals of the Public Defender Office and also holistically what you're looking at for supporting system operations overall, we welcome that input and want to make sure that we're taking that into account and trying to do that. So, if you want to share now or any day, we appreciate it.
Sure. Just to know that there are, you know, changes on the horizon as we adjust to figure out how to best grow this capacity. I brought members of my team here who have really been invaluable with helping me, like, hitting the ground running. I'm fortunate to have Alex Bunnen still here with us. He possesses so much institutional knowledge and has put in so much work to solidify the presence of this organization in the county, and so, I'm grateful for that. But I would just ask your continued engagement as we make adjustments. You know, the DA's office comes in with a squad. We're very top lean, and so, we're really trying to really figure out how it is that, what the weight of our leadership structure will be to support the growing nature of this office. And so, I just ask your continued engagement as we make those adjustments. I'll be meeting with you all in the future, just to keep you apprised of the changes that we're making and the progress that we're making.
Thank you so much. I have no further questions right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct 1. Precinct 2, you will now have five minutes for questions.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come in here today. We really appreciate it. And the three brilliant people that went before me asked all my best questions, but I got a few more for you. How do you ensure that your budget aligns with the county's goals for justice reform and reducing recidivism?
Sure. So, you know, one of the things that I think the county is focused on is, one, making sure that our model is offered to a larger percentage of the people in Harris County that get accused. And so, this budget will absolutely do that. It will allow me to fill those vacancies and get more attorneys in here so that we can provide those services. The county, in an attempt to reduce recidivism, I tell people all the time, if you are trying to attack crime at the courthouse doors, you're way too late. And so, one of the things that we do in our office is, we provide holistic services. We do everything from helping people get their birth certificates, ID, help them find housing, mental health services, so that we can try to reduce the chances that someone will encounter the criminal justice system again. And so, that's a lot of the work that we do. We have an entire division devoted to that. But I think our holistic model, making sure that that is robust, is one of the keys to making sure, or the county's strategic plan to reduce recidivism.
And speaking of the holistic model, how does your budget address the essential need of providing holistic services to your clients?
So, it allows me to, one, put more resources into that division. Right now, we're firing on all cylinders, but I literally today got an email for need from them to be able to provide more in that space, and so, it would allow us to grow the capacity to do that. Right now, we do a little bit in the way of parole. We do a little bit in the way of helping people whose license have been revoked after they've been accused, different things like that, but we can only do so much. And so, we want to make sure, as I grow this number of lawyers, that all of those lawyers in the trial division will be calling on the lawyers in the holistic division to assist them, and we need to make sure that we have enough lawyers there. Right now, I have 80 in the felony trial section and like 12 in the holistic division that support the entire office of 200. And so, I want to make sure that the holistic model matches our trial representation, or at least is able to accommodate that weight.
Absolutely. I thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Precinct 2. Precinct 3, you will now have five minutes for questions.
It's so good to see you, Judge Draper.
Good to see you as well.
The budget overview that I have mentions that this is the third year of the final year, and says you would be at 50%. I know that's unlikely, but tell me what you think about the future. When are you going to be able to have closer to that 50%?
So, and so, this is part of what I was discussing before. I'm hesitant to say, oh, I'll be there.
Not timewise.
Right, right.
I mean, how are you going to do that?
So, how we plan to do that is, we will, the short version is, hire more lawyers, but we are going to be recruiting in classes. For example, our goal for the next year's class is 25, right? And so, if I can increase that pipeline to 25 lawyers, that's 25 lawyers that will become very well-trained and become prepared to go into our felony division. And we will do that year after year to be able to increase the pipeline of lawyers going into our felony division. Right now, I have 200 lawyers. That's a lot of lawyers. It makes us one of the biggest offices in the country. It's not enough.
Right.
And so, I need to make sure that we have a structure in place that regularly brings in classes of lawyers, trains those lawyers, and then dispatches them into the courts. And so, that takes a recruitment program. That takes a training director. It takes a retention program, right? And so, we have to think about how we retain those lawyers. I can't bleed them out as fast as I'm bringing them in, but we've done a lot in the way of thinking about how to retain those lawyers. I was a lawyer there myself, not appreciating the value of vesting, right? We want to make sure that our lawyers understand the value of the work that we do, but also the value of working for the county. And so, we are putting a lot of work into our retention and in our recruitment program.
Thank you. I, I think that you're talking about February class would be your first, 25?
So, we actually just, no, we actually just did our first mini-class, and we had about eight lawyers start there. We will have another mini-class in February, because you just don't have as many lawyers that graduate on the winter cycle. Our main class will come on in August, and the goal is to have 25 in that class.
Okay. And what is the cap on the lawyer's case file?
I'm sorry?
Number of cases per lawyer?
Oh, yes. So, we have, our misdemeanor division is 226, and our felony is 128.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Precinct 3.
And I would give my time to Judge Breones also.
Okay. Thank you, Precinct 3. Commissioner Breones, you will have an additional four minutes.
Thank you, colleagues, for the extra time. Judge Draper, my colleagues have asked us in different ways, but is there anything else that you want us to be aware of? There's always an open door 24/7. Call me, text me. But for today's purposes, how else can the court better support you to getting to this goal of at least 50% of the cases?
So, I want to reiterate kind of two of the things that we've spoken about today is, one, your engagement. We have worked well in partnership in my 45 to 60 days that I've been in the role, but also even my time as a judge, I engaged with you all in that capacity. And so, I ask your continued engagement with me and my team. The second is space. I've heard, I listened to other people's presentations today, and I heard them saying the same thing. We are in one location, so we are in 1310 Prairie, and we have several floors in that building, but there are several floors that we don't. But at this point, we are the dominant organization in the building, and so, I would ask that you all not only prioritize as space becomes available, but to the extent that you can lean on offices that don't necessarily need to be there because they have other options, that you would start to have those conversations with those offices so that we could make use of this, use of the space, because it would go a very long way for us to execute the mission to just start to get some of those spaces.
Absolutely. I was pinging my team as you were speaking in terms of us all leaning in even further with the engineering department as we're working on space planning, and I know proximity to the courthouse is of paramount importance for you and your lawyers. Is that correct?
And the jail, yes.
Okay. Noted, and we will be sure to continuously reiterate that, because we want you to make sure you have the space to hire all these lawyers who will help us achieve the goal. So, my other question in the remaining time, I wanted your thoughts in terms of the MAC and opportunities to grow and collaborate with the MAC, and how that fits into this ecosystem of indigent defense as we continue to improve here in Harris County?
Sure. So, I know that a new director is on the horizon. I look forward to working with that director in close collaboration with them to make sure that both of our offices are working together to execute the mission of making sure that high-quality representation is offered throughout the county. You know, right now, it's at the misdemeanor level, and I think it has done a lot to really improve the quality of representation. Also, the list has grown exponentially, and we're able to, there's still a lot of work to be done on the auditing portion of it and making sure that we're keeping an eye on costs, but we've come a long way in the misdemeanor space, and I hope that the same happens at the felony level, right? There just, there has to be some oversight. I don't care what you call it, a MAC, or what, there has to be some oversight, because the cost is, is getting out of control without having a good grip on the quality of representation. And so, I will continue to work with the director if there is any felony expansion. I will continue to work with district court judges, who I have a great relationship with, on how I can support them on what it is that might be a good fit for them. I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. We look forward to continuing to work together on our Indigent Defense Commission and beyond. And so, just one quick question with regard to MAC. So, would your, and I look forward to really diving in further with the new director, MAC funding?
So, I did take a look at theirs, and there is a proposed cut. You know, I've spent a lot of time in the weeds with the Office of Managed Design Counsel through my previous role, and so, I'm very familiar with their operations. And I know the county's in a crunch. What I can say is, I don't know what that $300,000 gets for the county, but what it does to the Office of Managed Design Counsel will be catastrophic. They would have to cut personnel. They don't have it in operational costs. And not only would they have to cut personnel, that would have a direct impact on the quality and the cost of indigent defense in misdemeanor cases.
I agree.
I do not recommend a cut in that space.
I will do everything possible to fully fund MAC, PDO, as well as the district attorney's office.
I have to put a plug in for them. Yes, thank you for the question.
Yes. Thank you, Judge Draper.
Commissioner, we'd also like to revisit after further discussions with Director Harden.
Agreed. Thank you, Director Ramos. And Judge Draper, we're thrilled that you're at the helm. Thank you again to you and your team.
Thank you, Commissioner Breones. Judge Draper, you will now have two minutes for closing remarks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful questions and the opportunity to discuss our needs with you. The Harris County Public Defender's Office is the conscience of the criminal legal system. We keep the system honest, and we bring that same watchdog mentality to assisting the county and making sure that we are providing the highest quality of representation to indigent individuals accused of crimes in Harris County in the most cost-effective way possible. An investment in the Public Defender's Office is an investment in ensuring more just outcomes. An investment in this office is an investment in reducing the jail population. An investment in this office is an investment in reducing recidivism rates and keeping our community safe from crime and also government overreach. Rest assured that this office stands ready to maximize every dollar of this budget to provide our high-quality holistic representation to an increasingly larger percentage of the people who stand accused. Please feel free to reach out to me after today with any additional questions. I look forward to working with you all to make Harris County a more just county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to the Public Defender's Office. Our next presentation will be from the county courts.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and welcome to our county courts partners. To begin with, you will have three minutes for your presentation, then each court office will have five minutes for questions to begin with the county judge's office, and then you will have two minutes for closing remarks.
Good afternoon, Ed Wells, I'm Court Manager for the County Courts at Law, Probable Cause Court, Justice Courts, and the Office of Court Management. I'm joined today by Judge Erica Ramirez, Presiding Judge for the County Criminal Courts at Law. I expect to be joined by Judge Audrey Loten-Evans, Administrative Judge for the County Civil Courts as well. We recognize the serious budget challenges facing Harris County, and the difficult choices this court must make in balancing fiscal realities with community needs. As stewards of public dollars, we share that responsibility, and we're committed to navigating these challenges responsibly while ensuring justice remains timely, fair, and accessible to the residents who depend on it. We're bringing forward proposals for three targeted investments to protect the core functions of our courts. First is language access. Establishing the Language Access Office will begin implementation of the adopted language access plan, providing translation, interpretation, and support, so language is never a barrier to justice. Second, technology support. Funding an application developer will strengthen our ability to provide secure, user-friendly digital services, making it easier for the public to access court information and resources. And third, cybersecurity, and this is through the multi-factor authentication requirement. I believe this is kind of a placeholder for us, but it is to make sure that we provide funding in the event that a single item is not brought forward through Universal Services and the Integrated Justice Technology Committee to provide for that. So we had a placeholder with the cost that it would take for our department and the courts that we serve. We also support the district court's request for funding increases for appointed judicial officers. We have two associate judges, one of which will be going away at the end of this month with the end of ARPA funding, but we also have 15 criminal law hearing officers, whose salaries historically have been tied to that of the associate judges. We support that, they have a significant role in justice, both associate judges and the criminal law hearing officers. And competitive compensation is key to both recruiting and retaining, which has been an issue in the past, those positions. Last year, we talked about the National Center for State Courts Judicial workload study. It called for jurisdiction our size to have 27 and a half criminal misdemeanor courts, 12 more than we currently have. Also recognized the need for eight county civil courts, as opposed to the four we currently have. With the support of this court, we have one new county civil court at law created to start near the end of this year, but it's not enough, you know? The National Center study confirmed that Harris County's, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to questions from court offices, beginning with the county judge's office, you have five minutes.
Hi, thank you for being here and for all that you do. I would love if you could start by discussing whether there are any recent changes in legislation that you expect to impact your courts in any significant way?
Sure, I think everyone is familiar with SB nine, and while it has a much smaller impact on the county criminal courts and misdemeanor courts, it does impact the operations at probable cause court. And so my guess is that over the next several months, we're going to be refining the processes there to figure out how best to deliver what we need to do and stay within compliance of the law. It is going to create an additional workload, especially on the district court judges or whomever they give those responsibilities to. But it also means that people will be probably spending a little bit more time in the JPC, a place that's very crowded. One of the things about the JPC is that when it was designed, long before all of this legislation, SB six and others, were considered, it wasn't really considered that there would be the need for staff there beyond a judge. And of course, we have the district clerk's office, we have pretrial services, we have the DA, we have the public defender, we have court clerks assigned to the JP courts there, and now we need to expand those things, right? And there simply is no space, and so that is going to be problematic and a challenge.
Thank you very much. And I would love to know if you could just share your general thoughts on the budget as it is currently proposed, whether you feel that you'll have what you need to continue processing cases in a timely manner, maintain current level of services, and just meet statutory requirements that are imposed on your courts?
I believe we will continue operations as we have, but as I stated before, with regard to the caseload that our courts face, both the civil courts and criminal courts, we're running at the razor's edge every day, and that has an outsized impact on staff, justice partners, and the people who come before the court. And so do I think there are going to be impacts? Yes, language access is a big one. We need a better way of providing that in an organized fashion, that's one piece of the Language Access Office that was a part of the plan, so that we could coordinate that better. We're expanding services in that area, because if we don't have language access, we don't have access to justice, right? Other things that are, I think, problematic, funding for those kinds of services, interpreters, transcripts for appeals, things of that nature, are items that we can't manage well, the volume, much like indigent defense, right? We know what the volume of cases is going to be, we know what percentages of cases historically have required those services, but it changes. Harris County becomes more diverse every year, and we've seen that need, you know, over and over again. I've said this in the past, and it's more true today than ever, in a year's time, at the JPC, we will go through 100-plus unique languages where we have need for an interpreter. Today, with AI and other things, it's easier to figure out what that language is, doesn't make it easier to find the interpreter to provide it, right?
Thank you. And then with talks of a potential hiring freeze as a way to kind of manage our budget in the coming year, I would love if you could discuss how hiring and retention have been for you, and what it would mean for your department if there is a hiring freeze that would prevent you from filling positions that either are already vacant or become vacant?
Sure, two positions in particular, one being the Justice Court Services Director, that's a position that was created a few years ago to dedicate an executive-level individual to the justice courts, providing them better support for their business operations, coordination for the technology that we support on behalf of those courts. In, I think, February of this year, maybe March at the latest, that director left to take an opportunity elsewhere, and I have not been able to fill that position, so that is one that would be impacted and is a need for our courts. The other in particular is a research analyst position, we have one position, it's been vacant for a few months, difficult to find a PhD candidate or PhD holder for that position, but it allows us to do the research on programs internally, so that we can decide better, what are our priorities, where do we need to put our resources for the future, right? We're very, very lean, all of the courts that we support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Judge's Office. Precinct one, you will now have five minutes.
Thank you, thank you both for being here. So as you mentioned, the justice court position has been recommended as an offset, and as well as an additional half a million dollars in offsets, what positions, if